Good evening. This is the Rutland Town Planning Commission and it's Thursday, August 22nd of 2019. Welcome, everyone. Let's start the meeting tonight with a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
..................................................................
Okay. Everybody have a copy of the agenda in front of them?
Yes.
We've got quite a few things on there, so we can keep discussion not to a minimum, but keep things going. That'd be great. Anyone want to move to approve the agenda?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Post? Any members of the public? I guess not. We've got two people here to talk about a land conveyance, and these are our two alternates in the audience. So we'll move on to the new business. And this is the Isavolta and Ecos boundary, or it's Isavolta land now.
Correct.
And so there's a boundary line adjustment for that, and that is this map that's more So Seth, would you like to address this first of the two of you? Or is...
Um, I can start up by saying...
Okay. So we've got Seth Howard from Isavolta here and Chris Vorlicek from Ecos Energy.
Yes.
And Ecos initiated this land conveyance, right?
Yes, yeah. We proposed to just do a lot line adjustment of that 1,371 square feet of area to just add the side access road. And we had the landowner agree to, until this meeting, on Joe Ramble, so...
So you need that lot to get into Otter Creek number two?
Uh, yeah. It's a side access road. Correct.
Right. One is off Cold River Road, but this one, according to your CPG, was to come off Windcrest.
Correct.
But, yes, then it was determined that you didn't buy that piece of land. It didn't belong to the town, and then you had to get into negotiations with Isavolta.
Yeah. Just to make sure there was no conflict, you know, so we're not crossing or building any side access road on their property.
And Seth, this is a private road at this point, right? This is not a town road anymore.
So this is information that has sort of come to light during this process. So, yeah. So this information about whether this section of Windcrest Road being public or not has only been brought to my attention in the last probably two months, speaking with, I believe it was with Josh Jersey at the time, who brought it up to me that basically Rutland Town has been acting as if this is a town road, or I can only speak back into 2006, which is when I became employed with Isavolta. So since that time, there has been, let's call it, standard road maintenance by Rutland Town. What Josh and I discussed on the phone was that at some point in time, the town would likely contact us to establish this probably backed, so we would... Pardon my ignorance for not knowing the exact process of how that would work, but potentially we deed that back to the town as a public road, so basically operations continue as has been done. And that's really the extent of that conversation that has occurred, really, my knowledge with Isavolta to this point.
Okay. The railroad tracks is pretty much the dividing line between the town road and your property?
So this is the information that's been presented to me from the town. I can't necessarily tell you if that's an affirmative yes or no. Sounds like, from your opinion, it is.
Right. So Chris, so this is for access. You'll be putting a driveway?
Yes. A, um, yeah, not a permanent driveway, but gravel driveway to standard dimensions for...
But it would be permanent for the life of the power?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, we wouldn't be pouring any concrete, though, so to speak, so it would be, uh, the access road would be there until the life of the system, the solar PV system, and then after that, we have the decommissioning process, and that will, it'll be gone after that.
So this Windcrest Road, does that go all the way up to the Isavolta plant?
Yes, it does.
It does. So basically, all you really need is a curb cut approval, which you normally get from the town road commissioner, giving you a curb cut to get off a town road onto your property, and having a curb cut onto this would get the access that you need, right?
Yeah. I suppose either/or. I am here to discuss the arrangement with...
Yeah. I think Howard means you do need to do the land conveyance.
Correct.
And we need to put that in our records. And then the next step would be the driveway permit, right, Howard? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Which is a very simple thing. That'll, he'll give you that, you know?
I got you.
No problem. But it's just an official thing to give you a curb cut.
Okay. I believe, my understanding, the original lot lines, the dividing lines, were just far enough north to where they could not access off of this road onto their property.
That's right.
Without cutting over ours. So this is the root of the discussion between us.
It shows like 5.2 feet.
Yes. Just...
That's just, yeah.
Yeah. So when this first came in, Bill and I were kind of tossing around, you know, is this a boundary line adjustment with a land conveyance, or is it a minor subdivision? Because a minor subdivision would entail some sort of right-of-way change, but that's not really, I don't think that's happening.
No. No, I don't. I don't feel that way. I feel it's just that it's a boundary line adjustment. Really, it's just for that access, and it's not a subdivision per se. If it's a boundary line, because both of the survey plots of both of these properties are on file here. Is that correct?
What I don't understand, what causes me some concern, is it's a conveyance with no reciprocal conveyance the other way, as normally happens in a boundary line adjustment. This is a property ownership transfer, and I think it, I think it's a minor subdivision.
But isn't a boundary line adjustment a transfer from one parcel to another when you move a boundary line?
It's a reciprocal, this isn't, usually there's a boundary, either dispute or concern or one thing or another. From what I gather from the permit, that doesn't seem to be the situation here. This is just a straight conveyance from property owner A to property owner B, and no boundary is being, between the two is being adjusted.
Yeah, it is.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
That triangle...
One is gaining, one is gaining .03 acres, and the other one's losing .03 acres. Is what it is.
But it's not a boundary matter. It's a conveyance to...
Well, then, we've been doing it.
.........
Then we've been, done this wrong many, many times, if that's the case.
That's true.
We've done this, I don't know how many times. We just did it, we just did this at Omia, or, excuse me, for Velco.
Velco and the Girdon.
Exactly the same circumstance.
Weren't they changing properties with neighbor?
But they still, they still changed the boundary norm, so, and it was conveyed from one, from one owner to another, so I don't, I don't see the difference.
My recollection of the ones we've done is where there has been an adjustment between two parties of a very minor piece of land.
That happens.
That's exactly what's happening.
That, that happens, but it does happen in this case, too.
Mm-hmm.
Velco, Velco conveyed...
Where's the common, where's the common boundary between these two properties? Common boundary line?
Now, it's a stone wall. The stone wall.
But that's not being adjusted.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
It's being... It will no longer be the boundary for the full...
It's getting swung over, it's getting swung over to the town road.
To the right-of-way.
I don't...
I think what Norman was, excuse me, what I was trying to say here is that a lot of times when we do a lot line adjustment, both properties stay the same exact square footage, the same area, right? We take, most times when we've done a lot line adjustment, they trade, they move the line, but everybody maintains the same number of square feet on their lots.
No.
And that's, that, that isn't happening here, but I don't see it, I don't see it as an issue.
Remember, Fisk gave basically lost land to give to Omia, or vice, or, excuse me, Velco.
Yeah.
Or vice versa, but it was an almost carbon copy thing, even a little bit more property than that.
Yeah. More, more acreage.
I think.
Yeah. I don't see a problem with it regardless, but...
Right.
Yeah.
I don't remember that, but I'll take your word for it.
So let's, let's use our new, brand-new boundary line adjustment form. Bill's been filling it out with the two parties here, and on the second page of that Form 1, there's a box of what we need to address tonight for this boundary line adjustment. It's got the five questions referring to, basically, to what we have for a design here, survey. And so are the proposed changes to the boundary lines indicated there?
Yes, they are.
The name and address, the professional preparer.
Yep.
Numerical and graphic scale of plan, date, and north arrow.
Let's see. Looks complete.
Yep. Existing features and facilities, including roads, public utilities, and utility easements, wooded areas, structures, watercourses, ledge, wet areas, excessively steep slopes, and rights-of-way. Not everything on that list is applicable.
No, it isn't. It isn't.
But what is applicable does seem to be there, right? And location map, and that would be the inset map.
That's correct. Yep.
Anything else we need to do with this, Bill? Do you two have any further...
I've got a question.
Yeah, Jim?
Where does the town line end of the private road begin?
Well, we, the, the latest research has it approximately along the railroad line.
Okay.
The rails, there.
The railroad boundary is what you're saying.
Where the railroad crisscrosses Windcrest.
So it's the eastern side of the rail.
Right. There's something that I find rather puzzling, having been through these property issues as a select board member in a previous life, and that is that the right-of-way would be conveyed. Normally, the right-of-way isn't mapped out in a privately, privately-owned section.
I think it's because of the confusion of whether it was town-owned land. The town had been assuming for a number of years that the town road, Windcrest, extended east of the railroad tracks and was maintaining it and had that right-of-way.
I would highly recommend that you get Byron Hathaway in here to one of the meetings and discuss all this with him.
I think it has, hasn't this come up in the select board meeting, Bill?
Yes.
With Byron present?
Yes, it did come up, so, but the tax, the tax maps we have show the road ending there.
Ending at the railroad tracks.
At the western edge of it.
So I don't think there's anything else. Do we need anything else, Howard?
If that's the case, then he doesn't even need a curb cut from the town, because it's not, it's not a town road. It's a driveway going to the plant.
Well, we'll let them figure it out.
Yeah, I know, really. Really, it's, okay, but whatever.
Yeah. Right. I know.
But I would like to request that it becomes somehow more of a conclusion than simply an elephant in the room at some point in time. For example, if suddenly this winter, there is no more care of the road without so much as a courtesy phone call, that would be disappointing for us for obvious reasons, and the indication is that most, so based on, I believe when Josh and I spoke, it sounded like there was maybe some willingness from the town's behalf to continue that and basically make the adjustments so that it shows everything accordingly. From the standpoint of Isavolta, we are certainly open to start those conversations, just to let everyone know what that would look like from our side. Most likely, we're going to be perfectly okay to do that, to make another further adjustment that shows that back as town property. Formally, it would have to go through our supervisory board from our corporate headquarters, which is in Austria, so that would just take a small amount of time, probably perhaps a month or two to come to that conclusion, depending on their meeting schedule, but that's most likely the formal procedure we should take internally. But at least from the Isavolta, my local management and our corporate management in Austria as well, the initial indication is that we would prefer to keep that a town road, as it's been acted on.
All the way to your facility?
Yes, I believe, so there, there's a particular place, we can go and physically map that out, where, basically wherever your services end today, that would be the, you know, we could follow that border.
I just want to point something out. It's kind of hard to read on, if you have this printed on, standard, eight and a half by 11, but in the general notes, section number two, it says Windcrest Road was conveyed as a 50-foot-wide parcel of land to the town of Rutland, Vermont, by a deed recorded in Book 12, page 7, dated June 10th, 1952. This strip of land was formally accepted and laid out as a public street by order of this agreement dated August 4th, 1952, and recorded in a land.
It is a town road.
Well...
Where are you reading that?
It is a town, that's number two.
General notes.
General notes.
General notes, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
It is a town road.
Yeah, so, yeah. So hopefully, all those records can be found, and it's really a non-issue. But if you need to bring it to, back to us and have some discussions, just, by all means, just give us a call.
Does the town maintain in winter time? Do they plow all the way up? Town road.
So, and what did we decide about the curb cut? Would probably be needed now, right?
If it's a town road, it's required. If it's not a town road, it's not. But this, this does say Windcrest Road, but it doesn't say the length of the road. Windcrest Road still exists.
Right.
But it doesn't say the length of the road that was, that was given by deed, so...
In 1952, it could have stopped at the railroad tracks.
Yeah.
Right.
So I think there's still, that's kind of...
There might not have been a road past the railroad tracks at that point.
Right. Correct.
So basically, we don't know whether the road from the eastern boundary of the railroad tracks that continues, who owns that at this point?
I think if you visit Book 12, pages six and seven, it would, I feel like, that's where the answer lies. Yeah.
Yeah. I think what Howard, somebody was saying is we don't know whether that was here.
Right.
Or here. So at this point, it's...
I'll see Byron in the morning. So I'll ask him about that, but I don't, I don't know whether that would have to make us any different. I don't think it would have changed if they require a road access or not.
Right. Right.
Yeah, that, that wouldn't affect the boundary line.
Right.
No.
That's what we're doing.
Okay. Do you two have any other requests of us? Any further discussion? Or are we ready for motion before I cut off discussion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we close the boundary line adjustment in accordance with the survey plan Vermont Survey Consultants LLC has submitted.
A second.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anything else, Bill, we need to do with the form? Any discussion? Ready for a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstain.
Boundary line, we got part of it done. There is still, this is still before the PU, or the Public Service Department is still looking at this, right? This access?
I wasn't updated on the actual status of other departments looking at that, but, so the Public Works Department is looking at it, you believe? Is that what you're suggesting?
No, we don't really have a, no, I meant the state, as far as, as far as your CPG, and, and there was, there was an investigation into the access, the one versus two access road, so, yeah, that's a different matter. Sorry.
Close to having to now.
Yes. So we've got, we can, the, the land can be conveyed. Howard, do you need anything else?
We're gonna need a survey plot for recording, the full-size survey plot. 24 by 36, whatever, or 18 by 24, 18 by...
Yeah, I think it was on, it was on the cover sheet.
Probably, um, our brand-new cover sheet.
Yeah, I know I saw it someplace. Yeah. I see the $15 fee. I'm looking for the size.
I don't know if it mentioned size.
24 by 36.
Is that what most of them are? With that, that's in storage?
Are these, what are ours? Are they 18 by...
I'll go look up the other one.
I think they're 24 by 36, but we'll see.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I don't, against their point of view.
That was an oops on that, all that work on that form.
Yeah.
Better add that in there.
Well, I think we approved it saying, let's, let's give it a ride.
Yep.
Let's take it for a ride first, and so, unfortunately, you're the first passengers in that ride.
Wasn't so bumpy.
Yeah.
Just an unanticipated stop along the road, right?
Well, I'm not even sure if it was actually a road at this point.
What road?
It's a bumpy drive.
Okay, well, thank you both for, for coming in.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, just let me, or...
We'll see what the...
Yeah, he should be right back.
24 by 36.
The next item we'll be taking up is the smaller map, and that's the Velco. They in, back in June, Mike Fisk came here, and they're putting up a solar array for their own use on their property, and there was a buffer issue with an adjoining landowner. There's a state requirement that the solar array has to be back.
We addressed this last time.
Yes, but they're coming back with...
Right. But this is just a continuation of the last...
Yeah, yeah, I'm just giving some background. So we asked them...
It lists the margins, but it doesn't say the size of the page.
[laughing].
Or do you want to get back to us? Yeah, we can find out. So I'll send a copy of the approval.
Okay. If that's okay.
Perfect. Thank you all very much.
Okay. Thank you. So when Velco came here, they told us about the solar array and that they, they were too close to the buffer requirement. We asked them to combine two parcels into one parcel. That they had the parcel that they conveyed, we did a boundary line adjustment from the Girdon estate, and asked them to file a new deed, and they did a new survey on, on this. Actually, looking at this tonight, they not only combined the second, what's called parcel one, with their property, they combined a small parcel up here in the northwest corner as well. I'm not quite sure, but it doesn't have anything to do with the buffer area and what we were asking for in regards to that.
But what it is, is they had these, it was a separate parcel, is no, no longer a separate parcel, now it's part of the entire...
The bigger parcel.
Part of the bigger parcel. They've combined everything into one, one parcel.
It was, who owned that separate parcel, that smaller one?
Well, that was, that was Tom Girdon's, and Velco bought it. Velco bought it, when they bought the 36 acres, they also bought that, it was a 1.3-acre parcel.
Okay.
They were separate parcels.
So this is a good thing. They're cleaning up all of the...
They're cleaning it up, and now it's one entire parcel. They're complete. Yep.
So all of these lines that are there are disappearing. Is that correct? Those parcels are all being incorporated into the big, larger parcels, like, is that what we're looking at? So those, those boundary lines will all disappear?
They won't disappear.
Oh.
They're always kept on a map.
Okay.
Just to show that, you know, they're showing us dashlines as to what they were, but the deed...
The deed will now be the whole property.
Deed will describe it as one...
One parcel.
One parcel.
Yep. Got it.
So Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, the select board agreed to this, they agreed that two parcels going into one, and I'm, I assume...
They agreed to waive the boundary requirement, provided they were going to combine the parcels, and that the requirement was they provide them a letter saying they're gonna do that with 30 days. Velco gave us the letter right away, and here it is. So the select, the letter from the select board didn't have any requirement beyond, we expect you to do this, we expect you to tell us when you're gonna do it, and that was it. There wasn't anything else that you need to bring it back to us for approval. That was, so with, with, if this gets approved, they've met the requirements of what they were asking for.
They're still, they haven't done the deeds work yet, right?
Right. Yeah, but once this process is completed, then, then they've met, so, so we gave them the waiver on the buffer infringement pending them actually doing this, so now they're just doing it, so...
We're meaning, uh, this, this...
The town.
The planning commission. The town.
Yeah, so the select, they asked the select board for a waiver on the 50-foot buffer, and the select board said, yes, provided you combine the parcels, and then the buffer goes away because the boundary line is no longer there that you're actually infringing on. So they said...
Isn't that the same determination we had made last month? No?
I don't know.
I thought that was the same discussion we had had at our meeting last month.
Yeah, and I think we're both on the same page, but the select board, because they needed a letter from the select board saying it was okay to go forward.
Right.
To get, to get their...
They, they came to us first with the questions.
Right.
And we, we didn't have the ultimate authority to make that decision.
Got it.
The select board did.
They needed a decision in time to go to...
Right. The PUC.
Yeah, I mean, it is working through the, the process at the PUC.
So approving this, they've met their, you know, allowing them to move forward, they've met their requirement for what the select board asked, to give them the letter.
Because we were gonna have difficulty making, making their timeline.
Right.
Right.
So we need to approve this, or the select board is going to approve?
The select board, the, the select board didn't, the letter from the board didn't ask them to come back to the select board for approval.
But they do have to come back to us so that we can put that through.
Right.
But they've, they've met their obligation so that the select board would give them the waiver in time for them to actually do the work.
Right.
Got it? And that's, that's where I was a little confused.
And Velco is looking for the go-ahead, so they, I mean, this looks good, go do the deed.
They want to make sure everybody's, you guys look over and said, okay, yeah, we're happy with the, we're happy with the way it looks, and then...
Then we approve it and we get, we file it. Perfect. Okay. Got it.
They're ready to, to bring the, the plat in, in the deed, once we approve it.
Right.
You know, right now, they have a total of fifty-eight point seven-nine acres, you look on the left-hand side, that bottom area summary block, where they tallied up all three pieces.
Mm-hmm.
So, that deed will come in showing a total of fifty-eight point seven-nine acres.
Right, which will be the exterior boundary of the property, with all of the dotted lines included as one parcel.
And is that gonna be, is that all commercial?
It's all commercial.
It wasn't before, it was, right, it was-
Right, until Velco, Velco had twenty-one acres of commercial, and then, of course, um, anything they, anything they own is, is commercial, so.
Does that require a change on the land use map, or no?
The land use map is aspirational.
Okay.
It's what we would like to see, and trying to figure out.
Well, so, well, you see the gray up there of the twenty-one acres that they own, would, that area would grow, it'd go all the way across to North Grove Street, it was same as the map we're looking at here, so that-
Oh, okay.
But, yeah, the gray area up there is just a-
The, the gray area, that looks like New York State.
Yeah.
Right, kind of, sort of?
Well, it's pointed, yeah, yeah.
Up in the, uh-
Or maybe Massachusetts.
Upper right-hand call, corner.
Yes.
It's right here. No, it's- I believe it's right there.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's a-
Oh.
Upper left-hand corner, sorry, can I, direction backwards.
That's Velco, okay.
That's Velco.
So, it would-
That's up by me.
Okay. So, when we do the land use map again, we would extend that gray area-
That should be expanded.
Over to North Grove Street.
To include there all their property.
Yeah.
So, that was the, the question, I just wanted to make sure that-
They need a change.
Right, that we're, that we're making it to reflect the actual intended use, so.
So, are we okay with the, the survey? Does anyone want to make a motion to let Velco now know that we've looked at the survey? It conforms to what our discussions have been with them, and they should feel free to go ahead and finish this process?
I'll make a motion that we approve the survey plat as, as presented here. Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Now, the next item is about the next select board public hearing. I think I mentioned this the last time, but it's just a reminder, they have to hold two, two public hearings, they've held, they've held more than one, but since they made some changes, this is the second one, right Bill? This is second and last, isn't it?
Third one.
Right, but this will be the last one.
It'll be the last, yes.
So, October first at seven here.
You mentioned that last time, I think.
Both at Warren Public.
Good.
There we go.
Good, and we don't have to do a presentation?
Good.
They said, thank you, no.
Good, I can't be there anyway, so, I told you.
Um, the next item.
Wait, wait a second, October one? No, I can make that.
October one.
That'd be a Tuesday.
I can't make, I can't make our next, uh, no, excuse me, it's the October-
Third meeting?
Third meeting, yeah, because I have a function.
Oh, uh-oh, okay.
I had mentioned that to you last time.
So, the next item is the stormwater ordinance. Haven't done a whole lot, I have been in touch with Andres Toriso, we decided October twenty-fourth would work better for him, so that would be our second meeting in October, and so, he's setting aside that time for a public, the next public meeting at 7:00 PM that night, and we'll probably have it here, just to make things simpler. I did talk to him about getting the rest of the addresses that we need for the mailing we want to do, so, so that we notify everyone involved, everyone impacted by this ordinance. What I haven't done is write up that one-pager, that letter to be sent out. I will have something for our next meeting, which will be the twelfth of September, and so we can look that over then, although I'm gonna be late for that meeting, are you around?
I should be, yeah. The twelfth, yeah.
September twelfth?
Mm-hmm.
I can work with you on the letter if you want.
Okay, okay, that'd be great.
Sure.
So, hopefully, hopefully we'll get better attendance at this next meeting, have people understand this ordinance a little bit better, why it's there, why it's important.
All we can do is do our best to make sure that the communication gets out, and, you know, be responsive to those who, who show up or inquire.
Yeah, but the good news is Andres will help us.
Great. And he's doing some of the legwork on getting the, the addresses, right? Or the contact information.
His, his people, his people will be mapping that-
Great.
Stuff.
That's the biggest thing for us, because otherwise it's a lot of time and energy on our part.
Yes, absolutely.
Of course, the thing he's gotta be careful of is names are changing all the time, transfers are-
Right.
Coming through here, and you gotta make sure that, I'm not sure where he's working from, from the list, but it, no doubt, it's not a hundred percent up to date.
But he could get them to you, and then, or you, or we could review them here at the town to make sure that they're-
Need to verify it.
Need to verify it.
What is the best parcel database for him?
The grand list.
The town's grand list.
The town's grand list, and it changes, I mean, we're changing it regularly now, doing all the, updating all the transfers.
But once he sets that, whatever point in time he sets that, that list, it can be reviewed by us for any changes, because we're only talking maybe a half dozen, I can't even imagine there'd be more than that, that would change in that time, unless you get a whole bunch of property transfers all at once, but-
No, there wouldn't be that many.
Once we have all the parcel IDs, that's, that's it.
That's easy.
Yeah.
Right.
Easier.
Easier, right, okay. It's a relative term, my apologies.
And we'll be doing the mailing anyway, unfortunately, Bill.
We did talk some about flagging the grand list, flagging these parcels on the grand list, so we can pull up a listing at any time.
That'd be great.
Of all the parcels that are, that are on there. And, and we haven't done that yet, but that's, that's really the best way to go.
From a functional standpoint, Howard, how would that, how would that be achieved? The flagging of the, those parcels on the grand list?
We, we would do it, basically, in the lister's office, we would, we would flag, we've got a field in the grand list where we would flag, flag it, and with that, we could print out, you know, an Excel file or whatever.
Right, do a sort on that particular field.
Yep.
That's great.
And so, it doesn't matter if names change, you'll always, you'll always get that same-
Same field, right.
We can do a mailing every once a year.
Right.
Right.
That, that, yeah, that makes it very simple.
So, whatever, whatever properties changed from the last year, we could just send the same stuff out we're sending now.
Yes, to the right person.
Just another chore to keep track of.
So, are we going to do that, or, or address that in the future?
Yeah, I mean, once, once we get the parcels, parcel IDs from Andres' people, we could do that internally?
We could actually, we could actually do it in-house, I mean, it's just another workload to do, but we, I could sit down with Bill, whatever, we could go right down the map and pick off all these parcels, and we could probably do it better than Andres' kind of, we've, we've got the-
The first one's gonna take a lot longer than any other, you know?
Yeah.
It may not, it may not hurt to let him do it and just cross it, though, right?
Okay, sure.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Let him do some of the legwork, maybe?
Right.
Or his people.
I'll, I'll try to get onto it myself, and get, get a map and just check off everything that, that seems to apply, and, you know, go from there with it.
Yeah, and I'm thinking this flagging is something, yes, we continue on.
You know, if we had this up on a video on a wall here, as a group, we could follow this thing right down, right down the brooks, and, and pretty much, pretty much do it right here, because we have GIS maps that have all the property lines on them, and, and the brooks are on them, and so, you just, you know, we could work our way down and see what is where, I mean, that's, that's kind of the way I would end up doing it myself, but it could be done, as a group, too, if we wanted to do that.
So, are we talking about the parcels along the, just along the brooks, or are we talking about all the parcels in that?
Both.
So, so they're-
Signing two groups.
They're two groups.
The really, really important ones, and the whole, everybody affected.
Right. Those that are actually contiguous to the brooks, and those that are in the buffer area.
Some odd that are-
Right, forty and then a hundred.
Buffer, the refer corridor, yeah.
Right.
It's an important thing, though, two groups, not just one.
No, and it wouldn't be a bad exercise if we did that, then everybody here would really get a feel and see what, what we're talking about. You, you see it on a photo, and it would mean a heck of a lot more to everybody here to, to see exactly what we're dealing with, yeah.
How long do you think it would take? Would it take more than an hour, or?
I'm thinking an hour, we should probably, we could probably do it if we had, if we-
You're talking about after, after the list is established, correct?
After what?
After the list is established, we would do-
No, 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 we could do it right-
Oh, okay. Create the list while we're-
Sure.
You know, okay.
Yep, that would be-
I could probably finagle use of the fire station, we have a smart board that's twice the size of that.
Yeah.
We could see a whole lot easier on that.
That's a great recommendation.
For our next meeting?
Sure.
That would be a good way of doing it, then we could also have a copy of, we have what we call tax maps, they're town parcel maps.
Yeah.
And they were just updated recently, and we could have a hard copy of those there as well, so we could work between the video and that, and, and check them off as we go, and then, and then we can pick it, put them to the grand list and pick them up. But that, I think it would be beneficial, because-
It would be good to see where-
We really don't know what's going on out here, but to really see what we're talking about-
Yep.
With these brooks.
It would serve a dual purpose, one for identifying, so that we could actually send information out, as well as an educational experience for us to be better informed.
Just to know exactly where those brooks are, because I, I know the general area, but that's-
Yeah.
Yeah. So, are you talking about using the agency of Natural Resources Atlas, like, pulling that up, or a different website?
But we have our own, we have our own mapping here with, with all the property lines on.
Oh, okay, that's online?
The property lines, property lines are overlaid, they're not, they're not a hundred percent accurate, but they're, you know, they're close enough to work with, so.
They are pegged to the grand list, the prop, when each, when you show the film or the slide, or whatever it is, it's gonna have a property identification number one?
No, it'll, it'll like, it'll, it'll have, I'm not sure, the photo doesn't have the names on it, but, but we would have the hard copy of the maps right here with us, so we could just go down, and those have the name, all the names of everybody on it, all the, the parcel ID numbers and, and everything, so we-
ID numbers on the photo?
I don't think they're on the photo.
No, I don't, they're just-
We'd have the photo on the wall, we'd have the map on the wall, and then we'd have the hard copy map on the table, we'd just cross-reference them.
Yeah, we'd be looking at the same, property lines on the wall, property lines on the, on the map here, we'd just go right down and, and check them out.
Do a way to overlay those, the property lines over the map?
Property lines are on the maps.
Okay, they're on the maps, but the parcel IDs are not.
Right.
All right, we could probably manage.
Parcel IDs on the hard copy.
Yeah, we could probably manage.
And, and once they got that, then we could very quickly put that into the grand list and, and print off a listing of, of everybody that's there.
And then, yeah, I'm not gonna tell Andres not to do that, not to do it in his end, and then we can just compare the two.
Yeah, but I think it would be a great exercise for us to really see what we're talking about out there. I mean, I know where bits and pieces of it are-
Right.
But not, but not all of it, and it's, it's-
It'd be a good use of a time, in other words, Howard.
Absolutely, yeah.
That would be a separate meeting at the firehouse, separate from the normal planning commission.
Well, we, no, we'd have our meetings, but we'd just change location, so it'd be warned with a different location.
Okay.
In the past, we've had a couple of meetings, well, actually, they were doing work here, and for a while, we met at the firehouse while they were doing renovations here, I think, so.
And then we would, we would just, did we, would we adjourn and then do that? I mean, I don't, I guess it doesn't matter, does it?
No, I think we'd do it as part of our public meeting.
Yeah, I think it would be like the-
It would just be a change of venue for us, and we'd just make sure that on the website, for public notification, that the location would not be here, but-
Yeah, the, the location's on the agenda, so.
Right.
Okay. We're just assuming it's available, there's no class in there that night?
Uh, I don't think so, but I'll-
You'll check and make sure that we can-
I could pull some drinks.
Nice to have people in high places, Bill.
Great, that's a great idea, Howard. So, we'll spend the bulk of next meeting doing that, and then going over the, the letter to be sent out.
Right.
Okay. Dana, down, is there, do you have anything new?
I do.
You do?
Yeah. So, I apologize for getting here late, I realized that some of my edits from, the work that I had done from last time were somehow lost in my file, had to actually run home when I was on my way here to figure out where my original file went. And, anyway, so, I do have some stuff, I got some feedback since the last meeting, I've kind of consolidated that into four recommendations and a concern, so I'm gonna hand these out, and I put in red anything that is, that was cross-referenced, I said I'd do a crosswalk, so what I've done is all of the red references, documents that were, excuse me, articles that were referenced in the select board's policy. And then I have a, a list of comments and feedback, that'll give you my reason. And some recommendations, and we can work our way through them, and we can talk about, talk about them. But if you want to just read through, take a moment to read through the documents, I didn't change anything, I don't think, except one word, I changed ethics code of ethics to code of conduct, that was also a recommendation that I had received, so I wanted to-
And what the select board passed was called?
A policy, it was called Conflict of Interest and Ethical Conduct, I think, policy adopted on July twenty-fifth. I believe I copied that properly. And so, that's what I, I've referenced, I tried to do a crosswalk in all of the red reference, red comments referenced the policy from the, thank you, select board, adopted policy. And I also put in some notes, if there was no, if it wasn't present in the policy, I also noted that in red, just so that you would have that for reference purposes.
Could you repeat that, I didn't hear you?
The, if there was no reference in the policy to some of the items that we have on here, I've noted that in red.
Yeah.
So, and the last part, active participation, that was not referenced, none of those areas were referenced in the, of the policy, because that was mostly compliance, and I was trying to, in putting this together, focus on our active engagement as a collective body.
So, okay, I'm, I'm not clear on, when the red says disclosure article six, or-
Those are the reference, these are related back to the policy, even though they were developed completely separately, I found references to these particular items in the policy, and that's what I'm referencing.
So, we, is it your recommendation that those go?
I'm not making a recommendation about anything, I'm just saying, I said I would do a crosswalk, and that's what I've done.
Right.
And I've taken everything on the document that I presented to you last time, at least in, in the beginning and in procedures for managing conflict of interest, because it's really a conflict of interest policy. I have indicated the, our, or the draft items and where they might be found in the policy. That's all I've done.
Okay.
I mean.
Is that date right on when the select board passed that?
That's what Mary Ashcroft has dated, six twenty-five nineteen. That's on my copy.
Oh, six twenty-five.
Yeah.
Because seven twenty-five was not a Tuesday, that's all I.
No, I'm sorry, it should have been June. That should not be July. That, that's a typo.
Okay.
My apologies.
And Dana, could you?
That should be June twenty-fifth.
Summarize the comments that you've.
Yes.
Received. So I, I don't think, I think there's a little bit too much to kind of handle all of this tonight, but if you could just generalize what the comments have been.
The comments are all here, any comments that I received, I have put on the, on the summary sheet. There was one comment about referencing the policy adopted on six twenty-five. I tried to do that, but I put, I put July instead of June accidentally. Reference for guide or protocol instead of a code. I, I did not make that change. I didn't think that it fit within the context of the, the document, but that was expressed as a preference. Articles F, G, and H, there was a recommendation for them to be separated. I would make a recommendation that we could create a second section or a third section, call it section two, unity of authority, since all of those reference the individual in the, their, their ability to act on behalf of the, the committee and the authority rests in the, in the planning commission as a body as a whole and no individual member has any standing outside of the, the voting of the collective body. So that, that is a pretty good recommendation. We could change that and make it, so there would be three sections. One would say procedures for managing conflict of interest, one could be unity of authority, and the last one could be act, active participation.
Okay.
Okay? And then there was a recommendation for a separate provision or a section on rights and duties of the commission in event of a violation. I have to admit that I'm not exactly clear on what that was designed to achieve, but maybe someone could, could speak to that. And then there was a concern that was expressed with regard to discomfort regarding the remove, the removal provision. I made a reference to that, I did the checking and actually it's contained within Article five E of the policy and I can read that for you if you don't have a copy here, but what I did was looked at the original document to see if there was any reference there and there is, where am I? Article five, Article five is prohibited conduct and sub item E is a public officer who is a member of a public body shall not give the impression that he or she has the authority to make decisions or take actions on behalf of that body. So with respect to the, the concern about the discomfort of the removal provision, I'm referencing back to that because my belief is that we don't want people to be making or giving the impression or the appearance that they're speaking on behalf of the, of the committee, particularly if they're a commission member. I don't want in any way to give the sense that we are, that we are restricting First Amendment rights for somebody to speak up and express their opinion as an individual citizen. I'm simply saying that if we've had a deliberative approach to something, that the person needs to make it very clear that their, that their perspective may differ from that of the commission and actually maybe contrary to what was voted by the, the body as a whole. That, that's all I'm trying to communicate.
When you read five E, I didn't hear anything about removal of.
Um, so there was, there was a question about, and I have to go back and find my, my notes because, oh, I had additional information that the removal should be specifically related, got to find my notes on that. Specifically related to only conflict of interest such as financial, family, business, relationship, et cetera. That is broader than the strict interpretation of financial interest in terms of conflict of interest. And so I felt that if the select board had that in there as, as a provision, that we could maintain the provision if someone is doing, is violating our code of conduct that is not strictly a financial obligation. So that was my researched opinion on the concern for the, the removal provision, which is at the end of our draft document.
Just before the signature.
Just before the signature page, right.
I have to say, I'm having some problem with this. Whenever you, I, I read what the town put out.
Yep.
And I thought, and I thought that was good, but I think we gotta be careful where we're going with this. You know, when we get a nine-member board or whatever it is, not everybody will agree or should agree or whatever to, to what's going on.
Right.
And, you know, the board, the select board just voted on renovations for the building here, was three to two.
Right.
And I don't think that's going to change anything. I think the, the three that voted one way, they're, that's the way they think and the two that voted the other way are, are, are we trying to steer people and pull them together? You know, a conflict, I've read some stuff on a conflict of interest and like a conflict of interest can also exist when a person must answer to two different individuals or groups.
Right.
Whose needs are at odds with each other. In this case, serving one individual or group.
Yep.
Will injure the other. And when I look at you, Barb, working for the Rutland Regional Planning Commission and then working with us over here, I mean, is that a conflict of interest? I mean, you, you, you're working for your boss at the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, trying to, you know, push things through and I would say you're driven more from, from that end and to me, you know, things like that, it doesn't take much to be, to have a conflict of interest. And I'm not being negative, but I'm just telling, telling you the way I, I see it. And I don't know, I thought what the select board had put together was, was good, but I don't know how, how far we can go. You know, I'm not about to sign something myself with, with what I'm seeing right now to, it's almost like saying, if you're going to be a member of the planning commission, you've got to follow these rules. And, you know, everybody has rights and I, and I know we want to keep things in order, but those are just some of my concerns that I have. I just wanted to toss them out.
I, I don't think that this requires anybody to give up any rights, honestly. I think it's certainly, it's a code that we agree to follow so that we can have deliberative discussion and have an open forum that allows all ideas to be presented and then for us to be able to move actions, actions along by, hopefully by consent, but if not by consent, then by a majority vote. And if somebody wants to express their dissent, they're free to do that. All I'm saying is that that should be expressed very clearly and explicitly, that the, the person is not, is not representing the planning commission and that they are speaking simply as an individual citizen. Because otherwise it can get confusing about what the planning commission's role and authority is and what an individual's role and authority is.
Why's it never been an issue before? I, I guess I just wonder why, you know, I'm being asked to kind of, having sat here for nine years maybe, quite a while, quite a lot longer than everybody else, that it's always been kind of fine and we move forward. I'm not against following a set of conduct, but isn't it, isn't it at being an adult? I, I mean, do we, do we need to, to sign a form that says that we're going to act like adults? Aren't we adults? I mean, you know, I, I get it that there should be some guidelines and I'm not disputing guidelines and I'm not saying that, that, but, but there's things on here that, that I read that I almost think to myself, well, I guess I got about one more meeting. I mean, that's kind of how I'm, I, there, there's just some things on here that seem like they go a little too far. And, and to sign something to say that I'm going to act and conduct myself like an adult seems a little ridiculous.
From a, from a professional standpoint in the arena, in which, in the arenas in which I operate, there are a number of codes of conduct. And generally speaking, those codes of conduct are arrived at by the membership of, of the group. And if there are things on here, this is, I did this on behalf of a, a request for Barb to present something to help.
I'm not down on you, Dana. I'm not, I'm not disputing what, what you've done by any means.
I don't take it that way, right.
Questioning why it needs to be here. At, at least, at least to the point that we, you know, can't agree that there's a code of conduct and have it written down, but that we need to, it just seems extreme to me, I'm sorry.
Which ones stand out the most to you, Jerry?
I, I guess I'd have to read a little further. I just, just reading through it, it's a, that's, that's the first thing that kind of comes to me, it's like, really? I can't, I, I haven't conducted myself, I need to be told now how I gotta conduct myself? I mean, we're, I, I just see ourselves like, haven't we done really well at this for quite some time? And, and couldn't we, couldn't we follow a guideline that's, that's there and a code of conduct that's there and written down, but not to the point that, this just seems extreme to me. And that's very superficial, I've just had a chance to really read through it, so.
Do you think what the select board passed, passed in June goes far enough? Or are you saying that we potentially could add some?
Well, I, I think.
Some code to that.
To the point that I don't think that they have, I, I think that this seems over and above that to me. I mean, and I just, I don't know that that's really necessary. I mean.
It's in addition to basically what the select board did, in a sense, that, that this conflict of interest.
Norm.
Well, I think a number of things, Jerry, came together all at one time. And I guess the most important thing is what the select board did. And looking at it and checking some of the statutes that they referred to and the language of the select board policy applies to us. So my first reaction, and Dana and I had some conversation about it, is that, do we really need something separate from what the select board did because it applies? And.
Which we didn't find out about until after Dana had started this process.
Yeah, that's correct. The other things were my appearance before the select board and whether I made it clear enough that, that criteria number ten was not voted on by the commission. I thought I did. I think Dana feels differently. We agree to disagree. It certainly wasn't deliberately, deliberate, intended to mislead the select board. And then Jim wrote a separate letter that appears to be, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, to the select board, opposing everything we did. And I think Dana reacted to those two things and began to think about, maybe we need, you know, something, maybe these two devils did. And he, that's my language, not his. And what he produced, I kind of share Howard's view and I kind of share your view. I don't see the harm in setting something down if the scope of it in writing, if the scope of it is appropriate.
So instead of, instead of going around that, is it appropriate? You know, that's, that's the whole point, isn't it?
Well, I think frankly, I think, I think we should really make it very clear that the select board's policy controls, because it does, by statute and by their regulation of their, their policies that they adopted. And then I think we can do something that is workable and appropriate within that context, but isn't as broad as what is presented here. And my strongest concern was that as, I think as it originally read, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dana, that if somebody went to the select board and just said they opposed what the commission did, they voted in the minority, they really felt strongly, they went to the select board and says, I think my colleagues were incorrect in doing this, as I read the first draft, we could recommend that person be terminated.
No, that's an incorrect interpretation, I think.
That's how I read it.
Yep. That wasn't the intent.
I understand that, but I read it that way. And so I became concerned that that went too far. And Dana tells me, from what I hear from Dana tonight, as he articulated it, whether it's because of the revision or because I read it wrong, is that that is not the intention as long as whoever goes to the select board, if, in the rare occasion they do.
Right.
These were exceptional circumstances, both of them, that they just make it clear. And I think that makes some sense. And the, I'll, I'll read the conflict of interest stuff over again, but, you know, for instance, for myself, I practiced law for fifty years. Somebody comes in, it was a former client, I need to discuss that, whether it's his company or he or she is an employee, I need to say, I can't put it on.
No.
There may be situations where I would say, I know so-and-so, they're a good friend. What do you folks feel? We don't have any guidelines there. And it, it might make some sense to do that.
That's common sense, really.
I mean, that's kind of this, that's one of the things on the back here that I just, I wonder where, making construction is constructive and thoughtful contributions, isn't that a goal without saying? Or do we have, we have to put that down?
It's just, Jerry.
I mean, I mean, tell me, you're, you're the professional here, tell me.
Oftentimes, groups will set norms and that's more of a norm.
It just seems like common sense to me.
Right, but when you're, when you're looking at a deliberative process, then you want everybody to make sure that they have an opportunity to speak up and that they speak their mind and that that is heard so that the group can deliberate on that and take that into consideration. It's more of a dynamic. Some people will just sit there and just decide that after the whole process is done, they don't like it. And so then they speak up, which is contrary to the purpose of the deliberative process. So by putting it out there, that's an expectation that everybody is going to participate fully by saying that they like this or they don't like that. What I think happened a, a couple of years ago was very telling when we were looking at the view sheds. Everybody had an opinion, what should be on the view shed, what shouldn't be on the view shed. We went back and forth, we took things off, we put things on. We, we tried to do it from a, a global perspective. And the outcome, Alan Beederman said that, that the, the work that was done as a result of that, a view shed analysis was very tight, very, very collaborative and something that we could all stand behind. And that's what we want to do. We want to represent the majority or the, the greatest number of interests in the town when we're doing our work, whether it's putting together a, a land use map, an energy plan or some other documentation forms that we want to make sure that people can, can easily interpret and, and use, or regulations for store owner ordinance, you know? I mean, we want to make sure that it's encompassing the, the greatest number, the plurality of the, the residents of, of the town. And in order to do that, we have to have a safe forum in which everybody can express their opinion. If, if those opinions aren't forthcoming until after the fact, then it counterveins the, the whole purpose of finding some type of, of unity of purpose among the commission members. And yes, there are some things that you would say, oh my gosh, this should be common sense. But let me tell you, in the various arenas where I, I operate, there are often sets of guidelines that talk about how we're going to operate so that we can remind each other and hold each other accountable for making the best contributions. It's not a, a waiver of your rights or giving up any opportunities, it's just collective, call it collective accountability, that I'm going to support you. call it collective accountability, that I'm going to support you, Jerry, and you're going to support me in expressing our opinions. When we come down to a vote, we may vote on the same side, one of us may abstain, or we, we may actually vote differently because of our perspective. Those need to be honored and respected, but when the, the group is, is voting to move forward, at, at that point in time, if we want individually to express an opinion or write a letter to the editor, we're free to do that. But we write it as a resident of a particular town or a specific address and not as a member of, of a commission that has come to a collective decision. And that's what I was trying to help provide. By the way, the, the discussion or conversation developed organically that time. I wasn't the one who raised the question, but I did insert myself saying that I would be happy to do, do the research and provide some guidelines or context for us to operate as a collective group.
I think you actually were assigned it.
I was assigned it, okay. I, I, but I accepted the assignment voluntarily.
All that said, Dana, I mean, I, I think, much like with the view sheds, there's going to have to be some give and take.
Absolutely.
In this document, too.
I don't own this document.
If we decide to go through with it, we'll be going through everyone and deciding whether-
Sure.
Yeah. Mary Beth, did you have something you wanted to add?
Um, well, I think, just generally, maybe anything that's covered in the Select Board policy should just be taken out of this, this document, and maybe we can, whoever has an issue with any particular, um, article or section, maybe next time we can go through and just remove sections and just make it, um, just a more basic document if we decide to go.
Yeah, yeah, I know I have to spend a little more time with what the Select Board passed. Does anyone have any other comments?
Just question and Bill may, you will answer this. Did the town attorney get involved with the, with the town's conflict of interest policy? Was, or did the board do it?
The, the conflict of interest policy was, it's very largely the model policy from Vermont League of Cities and Towns, that they reviewed, they took out a few sections, a few words, and we inserted our town name and away we went.
So it covers all municipal employees and all appointees in a town, all volunteers that have been selected for duties in the town, right? It's pretty all encompassing, is who it covers, which is good, which is a good thing. Norm?
Yeah, I was, I thought, I read that over several times, the Select Boards, and I'm reasonably comfortable with it. It did seem strange. I, I thought it was something that was a, a model, and suspected it came from the League of Cities and Towns, because one of the footnotes had zoning in it and they didn't take it out. Knowing the general attitude, it surprised me, so I knew it didn't come from us.
I'd like to take a, a straw poll about whether we should continue with this, and whether we continue dissecting this, looking with the Select Board, doing more crosswalking, and figuring what should be in our own document or not, okay? I think, I think that's, from what I'm hearing, might be needed at this point.
Well, I'd like to just say, I read both of them, and I'm just real comfortable with the towns, I think, covers all the ground that needs to be covered, from my standpoint.
Okay. Mary Beth?
Um, so just thinking back to jobs that I've had, usually there's something like this, you know, it's kind of, instead of, you know, you won't do this, it's, this is a positive list of things that we do, just policies of the company or organization. I think it's, having something in general is a good thing when someone comes onto the planning commission. Um, just having a basic packet, you know? Uh, I think it's kind of a, a typical thing.
That's more positive than this is?
Well, just in general, like, this is how our organization-
Operates.
How we conduct ourselves.
Right.
So it's not, you know, directed at any person, you know, it's just, um, these are this, you know, the standards that we follow, this is how we operate and interact with, I don't know.
As part of doing business.
Yeah, just, this is how the company, I don't know.
We got started along this path with what I thought was an attempt to, to just describe how we would, we would like, uh, opinions that differ from the, the decisions made by the planning commission to be presented outside. Just, just making it clear that it either was or wasn't voted on by the planning commission and, and just being clear. And, and suddenly it became, conflict of interest came up the last meeting, I think, the meeting prior to this, that was added. And I was surprised then that we were adding conflict of interest to that, because this, I mean, our initial discussion of it didn't talk about conflict of interest at all. Just, just some, a way for us to express opinions that are personal, that may be different from the planning commission in a public forum.
Okay. So, just a show of hands, who would like to see us modify what's, what's been proposed and maybe come up with something, the rules of the road for, for new members, and maybe address what started all this conversation to begin with, and leave it at that?
Let me make, can I make one clarification? This is, this was not designed to be a proposal for us to adopt. This was designed to provide an opportunity for discussion. And this evening, we have had a lot of discussion around something like this. So from that perspective, I think my work on putting this together has brought the fruitful discussion that we wanted to have. So I feel validated in what I've done. This, this work was not designed to be something that we say, yes, we're going to adopt it, but to begin a conversation about how something like this would fit in. So the only modification that I would make to your comment, Barbara, is that if you want to continue the, the conversation and decide whether we want to adopt anything, not this, but anything, and what those, what those items should be, as Mary Beth has pointed out, that's fine. I'm happy to continue with whatever assignment I might have to, to do something that would be beneficial to the, to the group. So just to, to let you know that that's, that's where I'm at, but I don't want it to seem like this is a document that needs action. This is a document that I agreed to put together for discussion. So that was my intent. The, the fact that the, the Select Board actually adopted a policy between the time I got my assignment and the time I came back with, with some things for us to talk about, makes it a little more complicat, complicated, complex. It also speaks to the fact that the Select Board needed to do that because they didn't have one, and statutorily it was required. This is just our way of discussing how we can comply with not only what the Select Board has adopted for all appointees or elected officials, but how we can operate in a proactive way that is beneficial to the group as well as representative of our constituents.
Okay. A show of hands, who would like to continue, continue this process and refine some sort of code or guidelines for? Show of hands, who would like to continue that process? And who are against that? There was four, and, okay, four to three, and that's the full word. So, do we want to set up a small committee to work on this?
Whatever your pleasure.
Or just leave it?
Um, what I would, what I would-
I think, I think, I think setting up a committee and talking about it goes against what we're talking about. Let's talk about it. Let's continue to talk about it. I'm, I'm all for discussing it, but let's discuss it as a group.
Yes.
Yeah. One reservation I have, one reservation I have is I'm, I have not spent a, a good deal of time or enough time with what the Select Board passed. So I, I don't, it's not in top of mind what's already been passed.
Well, I think that's why we all get a chance to look, look those things over and-
Yeah.
And we'll, we'll take, take up some other discussion. I don't think discussion's a bad thing, and I, I completely agree with the view shed. We, I think we've done a lot of really positive things, and of the, I think Howard would probably agree of the, well, however many years it's been that I've been around, the, the groups that have come a, a volunteer lately have certainly got a lot more things, positive things kind of accomplished-
I agree.
Than have had in the past. And that's not, that's not a passion of anybody that's given up their time to do this by any means. So I'm, I'm not against the discussion, but I think we ought to do it as a whole.
Yeah, okay, okay.
I think that's a good idea.
No?
Um, two things. I would suggest a two-step process. Everybody take a look at what we have, come back and discuss it as a whole. But then I think there needs, I don't think there's anything wrong with a committee of two or three of us working together to present a completed document, following additional discussion of what's been presented tonight. Here, take those ideas, whether they are whittled, you know, several different people talking about more limited, a more limited scope. And, so I would think that it might make a lot of sense to try and get, have some more open discussion with the whole commission, but then take those ideas and have two or three people, even, you know, it doesn't have to be everybody that's coming out in the same direction, and try and meld something together, rather than have Dana do it and everybody take potshots, and I don't mean it that way.
No, no.
Yeah.
And what I would offer is, I, I have probably spent the most time on studying the, the Select Board's policy, as well as doing the research to put together a document for this group to consider. So I would happily serve as a facilitator, as we, if we're going through a process, we were having that discussion so that all of the ideas can be out, and then happily turn that over to a small group of people to put together whatever the version is that we're going to move towards. And then that way, my energies can be channeled towards the facilitation of making sure that all voices are heard, and that we can take notes, use a flip chart or whatever, capture those, and then have a few people, presumably some who had some reservations, as well as those who wanted to continue the conversation, so that we can meld it into some type of a, a, a document that everybody can feel comfortable with, if that's what our goal is. And for me, the idea is just so that we maintain and continue that spirit of collegiality and unity of purpose that Jerry referenced when we were talking about the work we did with the view sheds. Because that's, that's the type of work that I enjoy doing, taking a variety of ideas, pulling them together and coming up with something that is beneficial for the whole group, so.
Okay.
I'm happy to facilitate in that, because that passes.
Okay. Appreciate that, appreciate all the comments, and this will form the next discussion, everything that's been said this evening. And let's move that until two meetings from now, since we have a pretty full meeting next time, with all of the 80 parcels, 80-plus parcels. So the first meeting in, in October, let's take this up again.
I won't be there for that one, but that's okay, somebody else can facilitate, huh? Move it to the 24th, that's fine.
Yeah, we, let's move it to October 24th.
Yeah, whatever the date is. You just wouldn't have my, me to facilitate, not that the conversation can't happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your work, and thanks for everybody's comments, and we'll all do our homework for the next time.
When's it coming up again next?
What's at our next meeting?
When will this come up again next?
Oh, it's, it's looking, I pushed it till October, so it'll probably be October 24th, since Dana won't be here for the first October meeting. So, October 24th. Now, the, on to the next item. There has been a design done for the Pocket Park at Meads Falls. So if everyone, before they leave tonight, could just take a look at this, and if you have any comments you want to pass on to the engineering company or, or to Mary Ashcroft, she was wondering. It's, it's pretty basic, right? Are you involved with this, though? This came from your office, okay. No conflict there, huh?
I'm involved for the planning commission, just not everywhere.
So it's, just, just take a look at it. I, I don't think there's anything controversial on here. And, but if there are some things that are, that are missing, we can pass those along to the powers that be.
So I can't see from here, Barbara, but are there specific things that are, are design features in the Pocket Park?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, there's parking sp, spaces, there's different areas for signs, signage, there's a picnic area, parking, where parking. It's, it's pretty simple at this point. And it goes from Meads Falls to Business Route 4. And they're thinking about clearing, a lot of that's wooded area, and they're, they're thinking about clearing, cut brush clean and thin, and then gravel path running through there. So there's that. We'll pass it around and start looking at that while we just finish up on things here tonight.
What will the permits from the state environmental folks have to be to accomplish this?
Not sure exactly. The land is, is owned by Green Mountain Power, so they are-
Show me my-
They're not donating the land per se. They're, are they to the-
I don't think they're giving the land, I think they're allowing the use of it, the longer use.
And they're going through a relicensing process with that dam, and, which includes that whole area. So, and that's a federal relicensing process, I believe.
So this part could help.
It is, it is actually interesting to Jim's point, though, that, that you can't, you can't cut a tree this big around a relicensing impaired waterways, but they're going to clear all that brush there? That's amazing.
Well, I know they're going to clear it all.
But, but still, it's just, it's, you go, go up to Lake Dunmore and try to get a permit to cut a tree near the water. It's just, it just blows me away that the state kind of has, it's, it's a, it's a positive thing, and that's the direction I think they should go, but I'm surprised that they changed the criteria for everyone else in other places, you know? You know, I guess I'm not surprised, but-
It would have to be Green Mountain Power, they would do all, all the permitting, I guess, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm sure the state's involved.
They should have to comply with waterways like everybody else, and which they do.
I'm sure they do.
He makes, he makes a good point, you know, with, what can you cut, or what can you, can't you do along a river? And that's a roaring river. That water sometimes gets up pretty darn high.
Yeah, I don't know how close the clearing comes to the river, right?
It didn't, it didn't-
Yeah, it's just to the right of it.
Yeah, it did not say how.
It hasn't even come up yet, so. Preliminary.
Yeah.
They're going to have to get a permit from the Stormwater Commission of the town of Rowland.
It depends on how they conduct themselves, I guess, huh?
Why not?
It's not in our area.
Well, it's not in the moon brook.
A river's a river.
Because it's not an endangered watershed, or whatever it's called, impaired waterway, yep. Not endangered, but impaired.
It's not impaired, right?
That's not impaired, right? No. So it's not under-
It has water from those.
Can impaired sewagees-
It does have water from those, but, but it's slow. Into the, out of the-
That'll teach him.
Okay, it's been mentioned, brought to my attention, that at least one member of our, our commission would like to move our start time up to something like 6 o'clock or something like that.
Who is that? Who wants to do that?
I want to do that.
I like it. I realize that that might, I, I would love to do that, but that's just-
Move it forward?
Yeah.
I would too.
But that may affect Dana, may be very difficult for her.
Yeah.
I'd rather not, I like 7:00. It would make it nearly impossible.
Yeah, when do you eat? Yeah, when do you eat?
I can do 6:30 if that's probably the earliest that I would be able to do.
Is 6:30 even doable for you, Dana?
I'd almost go to 5:30 or...
Well, Select Board went to 6:00, and that seems to be working out. But I mean, it's, doesn't work for everybody, that's the problem.
Yeah, they just went from 6:30 to 6:00, right?
Well, they were 7:00 at one time.
Were they, way back when?
Yeah.
What about 6:30, Dana? Can you do that? And Andy?
Oh, yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm just expressing my preference on whatever we decide on when I'll show up.
So I promise, 2:15?
But that's too, not to put you on the spot.
Well, if you're asking for my preference, my preference...
Mary Beth has a bit of an issue, too.
With?
Kids.
No, no.
Today I drove to, to drop the kids off at the mother-in-law's house because my husband had a board meeting also. So, but normally 6:30 I can do.
If you're asking my preference, my preference is that it works at 7:00. I have to make a specific effort to get to a Select Board meeting on a night when I'm covering for you, for example, earlier than that. That's only because I work out of town and I rarely leave work before 5:00. And so giving myself barely an hour to get to a meeting would be more challenging than it already is. But that's just, that's my individual preference. If the meeting time is set at a different time than what it currently is, we'll see what we can do. You move it to 5:30 or 5:00, and that's going to preclude me from the table.
I'm still, I'm for 7:00.
I'll go for 7:00.
Yep.
Okay. Norm?
Can we try 6:30 and see how it works out for a while? I kind of like it earlier, but...
Somebody make a motion.
Who would like to give it a try at 6:30? Raise your hand. Drop.
I would, I'd like to move it up some, whatever we can do.
Early days.
There you go.
Okay, we'll try it. The next meeting, you're not here.
I'll be here the next meeting. I cannot make the October 1st, or October 3rd meeting.
So we'll move it up to 6:30, he may not be here.
What's that?
I say we'll move it up to 6:30, he may not be here.
He may not be here.
October 3rd would be at 6:30, right? Okay, let's try it for a couple of meetings. The September...
September 12th.
12th, right, in September. 24th, the, we're setting the public meeting for 7:00.
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
October 24th still won't work.
Well, October, right.
Yeah, it's September 12th, October 3rd, and October 24th, right? Those meetings will be at 6:30? Is that what you're saying, Barbara?
Yes.
Okay. And with, with feedback or evaluation on October 24th?
Sure. Yep, absolutely.
That'll be your first one, Dana. I don't know if that's fair.
What's that?
That'll be your first meeting.
No, I can make it the 12th. I'll be here on the 12th. Then I won't be here on the 3rd.
You okay?
Yeah, yeah. I like 6:30, actually.
Okay. Um, there's a couple of things I'm going to send Bill, there's a couple of events coming up that both cost money, but we've got a budget that can cover it. The first is the Vermont League of Cities and Towns Town Fair. It's, it's a little in the weeds, two days up at Killington, October 2nd and October 3rd. So I'll send the agenda to Bill to send out. And then also the agenda for October 31st, A&R is holding a day-long workshop in Rutland, When Governments Cooperate, and it's all about natural resource issues, if anyone's involved and interested in that one. And that one runs all day on October 31st.
Is that a Thursday or a Friday?
27th is a, 24th is a Thursday, so the 31st should be a Thursday.
Yeah, it's a Thursday, okay. Yeah, that's right, the 24th, right.
October 31st.
October 31st.
It's a Thursday.
And then the other one is Wednesday and Thursday, October 2nd and 3rd up at Killington. The, the A&R one is in the Asa Blumer State Office Building downtown Rutland. So we'll send that out. And if you're interested in registering, the best way to do that is to just go through, do you have a credit card, Bill? No? Okay. What is it, brand new or...
No, sorry. If we want to do it, we should do it as a group and kind of make a decision, so...
Yeah, we can also do a group check, if, right?
Yeah, it takes a little longer because that's up to the board meeting night to get that approved, so...
Oh.
Why don't people report back at the next meeting, see if there's interest or...
Good idea.
Yeah.
I would probably be interested in the A&R one, so I'll check.
My credit card works very well, don't worry.
Lots of people.
Is that going to go to everybody?
Yeah.
You mean like alternates, too?
No, 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 no. The information you're sending out on the dates and everything, send it to all of us?
Yes. Yep, all of you. Okay, anything else for announcements or news?
Yep.
Okay. Let's look at the minutes for June 20th, and then we'll be all set for the evening.
August 1st.
August 1st.
Motion to approve the minutes for August 1st.
Second.
I think they're just perfect. Norm?
I had two small comments on the old business paragraph 1B. I think the word resident should be called. And on the second page, paragraph small v... Okay, I read it differently now. I think it's okay. The changes the Select Board is going to review. I think that's okay. I understand it. So just that one typo.
Anyone notice anything else? You sure?
I am. I had a check, I put a check on my, I was taking resident as an adjective, so...
What did you say?
I said, I said I read, I read resident as an adjective, not requiring the plural marker, but that's okay.
Okay, all those in favor of the minutes of August 1st?
As, as amended?
As amended, with the one typo fixed. Oh, did you have Mary?
No, I just said I a little later. Sorry.
What's that?
I just said I.
Oh. Okay, any, any other I's?
I.
I? Opposed? Okay, anything else to come before this wonderful group?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, thanks, Dana.
You're welcome.
We're adjourned.